Okay, if we could call to order the council meeting of May 22nd. And if the clerk could please read the rule.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Spitzley?
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Eight members present in quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Do we have anyone that would like to remember someone at this particular time? Is there anyone? Seeing none, if we could please rise. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have heard your approval, the council proceedings of April 24th revised, as well as May 8th.
For the 24th, Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, I would move the minutes for the 24th as presented.
We have a motion for the minutes of the 24th. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously. Vice President Garza.
I make a motion to move the minutes of the May 8th meeting as written.
We have minutes on the May 8th meeting. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes unanimously.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute in recognition of Tanisha Ash Shakur.
And Councilmember Spitzley, with a bright shiny smile, is ready to do this.
Good news. Please come up to the round here. You know, it's, I'm so proud to be able to give this acknowledgement. And it's funny because today you sent me a note, and you're like, you don't know what you did to deserve acknowledgement about this. But, you know, when you're doing good things in the community, a lot of times it goes unrecognized and unappreciated. And so if this is just the one time I can take to show appreciation to somebody who's doing such great things in the community, then I'll take it. So, you know, we have before us, standing here, a Remarkable Woman of the Year. We already knew she was remarkable, but it was acknowledged through WLNS. So it's just a short resolution, but it's whereas Tanisha Ash Shakur was awarded the title of Lansing's WLNS Remarkable Woman. Out of 112 remarkable women that were acknowledged across the region, she went to Los Angeles as a WLNS Next Star finalist for the Remarkable Woman of the Year. She is the proud wife of the Reverend Dr. Akil Ash Shakur and the mother of Jabril, Jaleah, and Jarish, Jarri, Ash Shakur, which is, mother stuff is good. Whereas she's the founder and CEO of Voices of Color, a nonprofit organization whose mission is to educate and prevent domestic violence for all races, ages, sexual orientation, religions, and genders, and actively work toward restoring self-empowerment for victims and survivors. Whereas Next Star's celebration of the Women's History Month and International Women's Day is designed to honor the influence that women have had on public policy, social progress, and the equality of life in the United States. Next Star stations spotlight women who inspire, lead, and forge the way for other women. And whereas Next Star received over 38,000 nominations across the country, 112 were chosen to represent their station market based on criteria including community contributions, self-achievement, and family impact. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City of Lansing City Council congratulates Tanisha Ash Shakur on being WLNS 2023 Remarkable Woman and a Next Star finalist for Remarkable Woman of the Year. And with that, Madam President, I will move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there, I see no questions and no concerns. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
So here's your resolution. Want to say a few words, please? Just a few, you know, we've got a long council. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, first, I'll give honor to God, because I know I can do nothing without him. And second of all, like to obviously thank my husband for his support. Many of you may or may not know, but I am a survivor of domestic violence, so my organization, it stemmed around that. And I really want to thank you so much, and the council. When you reached out, it was just an honor, because as you indicated, I often do a lot of work, but it's something that's not acknowledged, because it's very confidential. And so it's an honor to be here today, and thank you all for those who have shown up to support me, friends, family, Mike and Erica Lynn, Shanice, I see my several sorors here as well. I really, really appreciate you, because you have supported me. And we know support can sometimes be silent, and so I really, really, really appreciate everyone. Thank you so much.
All right, and at the discretion, or discussion and discretion of President Wood, we are going to move forward item number four, the appointment of Laura Stoken to the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority, so that she can be sworn in.
Laura, are you here? Okay, if you'd come forward. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So we had, the Committee on Economic Development had Laura Marie Stoken in before. I wasn't there, unfortunately, but from what I understand, you made a great impression upon the committee members. And I love the second page here where you, it says additional information regarding experience and credentials, and it says, "I love," caps, Lansing. And then you start talking about, and that's the kind of energy we need here in working to make the city a better place. And so with that, I will move the resolution for her appointment.
Thank you. We have a motion on the resolution. All those, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hussein.
Sorry, just very quickly, I'm incredibly supportive of the appointment. I watched the playback, I'm trying to pull up the resolution now, but I'm struggling a little bit with my connectivity. Did we make the fix in the resolution from resident to? Okay, that's what I just needed to know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. They didn't want to. They'll just hang in the back, but they're here. Thank you all very much. I do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Michigan. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of. Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement. Authority Board of Directors. According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, this is an opportunity for council members, for any comments from council members. Are there any council members that have any comments they'd like to make? Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to inform the public that June 10th, we're going to have a town hall meeting at 5405 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. That is the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union Hall, Local 333, on South Martin Luther King. It's going to be partnering with Rejuvenating South Lansing and SWAG, which is the Southwest Action Group. Councilman Hussein and myself will be there. It's going to be more of a listening session to address the housing crisis we have here in the City of Lansing and all the red tag units that go with it. So we invited federal, local, and county officials to join us and hope address this serious problem we do have here in Lansing. So hope you guys could all join us. Once again, that's Saturday, June 10th, from 10:00 to noon, at 5405 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Jackson, and then Councilmember Cost.
Thank you. I just want to announce that our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting for this month of May will be canceled this weekend. It's every fourth Saturday usually, however, it's Memorial Weekend, and my family may be traveling. So the next month, June, the fourth Saturday, we'll be meeting at Gregory's 2510 North Martin Luther King to talk about anything Fourth Ward or City of Lansing related. I hope you can make it. But this month is canceled. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. We will be holding the First Ward Constituent Contact Meeting. It's going to be June 3rd, that's a Saturday, 10:00 to noon. It's going to be at 1203 South Washington Avenue. That's the old Train Depot, next door to the BWL Building in Rio Town. I would love to see everyone there. We have a great conversation and get a chance to wish your opinions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Wood. I do want to take just a couple minutes tonight. I am wearing a tie that's very special to me and a handkerchief, because I wore them both at my wedding 19 years ago today. And for those of you who may not remember, 19 years ago, that was 2004, same-sex marriage was not recognized here in Michigan. So we did have a big ceremony and reception here in Lansing. I had to go to Canada two days later, on the 24th of May, to make it legal. So I appreciate all of the movement that the LGBTQ community has made, and all the people that support that and have made it possible. And it's such an honor to be here, serving as an out-elected official. And, you know, sometimes I forget that not everybody knows that, because I've been an out-elected official in this town for a very long time. So I appreciate the support of this community, and wish my husband Bradley a happy anniversary tonight, and we'll celebrate again in two more days. And just glad that our country is moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we are to community event announcements.
Community events.
This Saturday at Evergreen Cemetery at noon, in the Little Arlington section, will be the Memorial Weekend Celebration honoring the lives of those who died in service to our country. And the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries will be there, as we have been for many years now, presenting a fresh floral tribute wreath. Invite everyone to attend. It's a very meaningful and very sentimental ceremony, and it gives you an opportunity to acknowledge the sacrifice that was made on your behalf by people before our generation. And we were able to give away all of the flowers that we had for the geranium giveaway last Saturday, and I just got a message from the person who says, "Thank you so much. I was the last person to get these great flowers for my mother's resting place. In the future, please let me know how I can pay it forward." You can pay it forward by supporting our group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements? Mr. Lynn.
Mike Lynn with the Village Lansing. This year, June 18th, we'll be holding our third annual Father's Day Peace Picnic at Wainwright Park. The history of this is during 2020, during what we know to be our worst homicide rate in history here, myself, the Village Lansing, and a couple other individuals came together and put together a picnic. We just popped in the park, at Risedale Park, the very first time, which was what those in the violence intervention world recognize as Track 37, which is the most violent area in our city. And just popped up some music, some barbecue, and had probably close to about 250, 300 people out there, from all different walks of life. But what we recognized, as we were sitting out there, is that we had feuding groups that came out there with their sons or daughters, or whatever the case was, and we had absolutely no incidents. So then we came back last year and went to Wainwright Park. And again, council supported that and allowing us to have, or paying for us to have, thank you guys, the stage, and we were able to put on some live performances, play music. Again, it had about 300 or 400 people out there from all walks of life. And again, same scenarios, no, absolutely no conflicts out there. And as you know, anytime we get people together, it seems to be these days we have conflicts. So that's special to me, that we've been able to do that. And this is our third year doing that. Again, June 18th, it'll be at Wainwright Park. I'm going to get with council to see if we can do anything for a stage again this year. But if you all can make it out, if anybody wants to make it out, please do. If you would like to support, you can reach us at thevillagelancing.org, or, excuse me, dot com, or contact any one of us about supporting that effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like a couple more community events.
So, on, I know somebody from the mayor's office may also announce this, but on Saturday, June 10th, at 8:30 is going to be the Mayor's River Walk and Run. I, myself, am going to probably be running in that race. It's at the Par Park Zoo, 1301 South Pennsylvania Avenue. So I hope people are there and get running for that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, Erica Lynn from the Village Lansing. We also have our fourth annual open house celebration that will be on June 4th. We will be out for the fourth year in a row, in partnership with the Lansing Promise, to hold an open house-style celebration for all of the Lansing School District 2023 graduates, and also from adult ed. So we will be out there on the Capitol lawn from about 11:00 AM until the last grad leaves the lawn. So what we do that day is we'll have music, we have games, we have giveaways, cash giveaways, and then we also have organizations and groups on site. They're able to fellowship, talk with graduates, and if you have any information, SWAG, anything that you think would be important or beneficial to a graduating senior that's going to move on to the next chapter in your life, we want you there at this event. Past vendors have included MSU, FCU, Capital Area College Access Network, the United States Army, Lansing Promise, The Fledge. We're going to have voter registration on site as well, thanks to our city clerk's office. So it's a really, really great time. If you're interested in supporting, volunteering, sponsoring, please hit us up. Anybody that has already, you know, reached out for sponsorship, we thank you, but we could always use more. Everything that is donated in kind, whether that's gift certificates, gas cards, gift cards, baskets that someone could use in a first apartment or a dorm, it's all going to go directly back to a graduating senior. So if you want to support this event in any way, you can visit our website. It's www.thevillagelancing.org, or you can email us at thevillagelancing@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other community events? Yes.
Good evening, council and city officials. My name is Guillermo Lopez. I'm here to invite you, on behalf of Cristo Rey Church, to our 44th or 43rd, it depends who you talk to. You know, this is a fun-filled event. It's been here for a long time. We want to invite everyone, and I have a poster, a virtual poster, and the lineup of the stage events for the fiesta. I have one of each for each of you. And I thank the sponsors, obviously, for helping us, you know, keep this program alive, this fiesta alive. I want to let you know that this year, we have two additional food items, which is pozole, which is a soup-like meal, and we have one that's called pambazos. Pambazo, I'm not going to tell you what it is, because you're going to have to go and try it. And of course, we again have street tacos coming back, because they were a hit last night, last year. So I hope that you can go and come. The very important thing on Sunday, we want to invite all veterans to be there, because we're going to have a special tribute in honor of veterans who have fallen, fallen veterans, veterans who have served, or those who are serving. Also, we include our public safety officers. So it should be a good event in memory of those, especially those who have passed and have paid the price. So please come. Everybody's invited. We open at 4:00 on Friday, the 26th, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Saturday, the 27th. And after the church service at 10:00 or 11:00, then we go till 7:00 PM with the fiesta itself. Thank you very much, and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, for those who might want to see the schedule, it's on the Atlanta Magazine for this month. So it'll be around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other community events?
Just really quickly, and I wanted to reference this, because it's going to be a lot of community organizations in partnership with Moms Demand Action. On, excuse me, on Saturday, June 3rd, it is a awareness event at Grace Lutheran Church in Lansing from 12:00 to 4:00, just so that you're understanding, to recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day, honoring survivors and victims of gun violence. So there will be people sharing stories of personal loss, as well as speaking about their work and how their work is helping victims and survivors in the community. And so there will be several organizations from the Lansing community that are partnering at this event, and will have tables for the community to bring awareness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm here to share about the community event, Black Girl Day of Play. It is June 24th, Saturday, at the Capitol, literally, a couple steps to my right, I think it's to my right. But it is a day, oh, behind me, okay. It's literally a day of play, where we have several playstations. And when I say playstations, we have black girls and women ages 2 to 92 swinging, hula-hooping, basketball, anything that you can imagine. I call it black girl magic, plus a block party. We'll have music, we'll have vendors. It is from 11:00 to 4:00, June 24th, at the State Capitol. We'll also have the street blocked off as well. I say you should be there if you are a black girl, if you love a black girl, and if you know a black girl. So I expect to see everyone. Everyone there to support and celebrate the joy of black girlhood. Again, it's Black Girl Day of Play at the State Capitol, Saturday, June 24th, the day to celebrate the joy of black girlhood. This is our second year having it. Our first year, we had about 1,500 people coming out, and so this year, we expect more. And we had a lot of people from out of county as well, so this is a great opportunity for Lansing to showcase its greatness. So again, Black Girl Day of Play, June 24th, at the State Capitol.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to the, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, one last one. Reverend Dr. Akil Ash Shakur, present to you our annual Father's Day picnic for my fraternity and I, the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. We will be at Central Park Drive at the park, and that will take place on Sunday, June 18th. And you can start coming on in around noon, and we will go until, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we are to the deadline for you to sign in if you wish to address city council on city government, I'm sorry, on legislative matters. Legislative matters does include items three through 24 on tonight's printed agenda. That's the blue sheet, and if you haven't had an opportunity to sign in, I'll give you about another 30 seconds to get in touch with Grace in the back there. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have a few items. I know that some of our constituents have already brought them up, but I just want to reiterate some of the, some of the mayor's comments here. So Memorial Day, as it's already been stated, this year, the Memorial Day Ceremony, as you know, is going to take place on Saturday, May 27th, at 12:00 PM at the, in Evergreen, at Little Arlington. But I think the other thing that I'd like to add is that flags will be placed, and this is going to be starting on May 24th through May 26th, if needed, until all three cemeteries are completed. So if anyone's interested in placing flags at the City of Lansing Cemetery, or would like to learn more, please contact 517-483-4303. So that's coming up. The other thing the mayor wanted me to announce, and this is more of an appreciation note, this past Saturday, May 20th, they had a Lids for Kids event, and it went so well. We had a lot of participation from people all over our community, although it was held at the Mirel Street Marshall Fire Station, or it's also known as Fire Station Number Eight. Had so many people come in there that next year, we're going to be working a little bit closer with some of the sponsors that are there, to maybe do a little bit more. So, but the mayor did want to express to all those who are part of this event, and to thank our fire department for what they did, because it was so successful. So Lids for Kids, and next year, hoping to make it a little bit bigger. The other thing the mayor wanted to announce is to talk a little bit about one of our special businesses that just opened, and this happened on May 17th, or as we know, on 517 Day, and this is Moneyball. We're so glad that they're here, and we'd like to congratulate the Moneyball Sportswear owner, Desmond Ferguson. Obviously, he celebrated the 517 Day with the grand opening of Moneyball's new headquarters here in Lansing. And for those of you who are not aware, you know, please, please find his building, which is located at 927 West Saginaw Street. This new location will feature clothing for adults and for children, but he's also going to provide a community space for other businesses to create a pop-up location. So this is, this is very good, and we're very happy. And again, congratulations to Mr. Ferguson. Thank you very much. And then I know that, we talked a little bit about the Cristo Rey Fiesta that's coming up. I just learned what a pamboso is. I think I'm, hope I'm pronouncing it correctly. It's very delicious, from what I've read, so those of you, please check it out. I have never heard of that, but it's, I'm hoping that when I, when I go, I'll be able to taste some of that. So thank you for the pamboso. And then lastly, just wanted to let you all know, and this is very, very good, I'm very proud to inform you that the City of Lansing was selected by the United States Conference of Mayors and the American Beverage Association as first-place winner in the medium city, and the city was awarded $175,000 to fund the Grow Lansing Mini Grant Program. What this is, is Lansing is actively working to prioritize equality in sustainable land use, which includes our community gardens, while addressing issues such as food security and food literacy, with an emphasis on the most marginalized citizens who are affected the most by the availability of resources. The outcomes for this grant will prioritize sustainability, inclusion, and healthy diets for all. Mini grants will be given to applicants based on need, how they address the priority needs, and program longevity. I do have a copy here, for those of you who may be interested, but all I ask is you please go to our website and type Grow Lansing, and the, and the application will pop up. From what I understand, there is two funding process, or two rounds. The first round is from June 1st through September 22nd. Applications will be funded on a first-come, first-served basis, and they're looking to allocate about $40,000 for this award. The second, the second round, it's more of a competitive grant process with awards in spring 2024. Applications must be submitted by March 15th, 2024, and looking at about $90,000 to be awarded for this second round. Again, we're very proud of this, and we're happy, and we congratulate our staff for all their work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that takes us to public comment on legislative matters. There are no public hearings as part of tonight's legislative matter, so again, it is items three through 24 on the agenda, and the first speaker is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Nicholas Zandi. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address the council on their item or items.
And as Ms. Stanaway is coming up, I want to make the same announcement that I made during the committee of a whole. There had been some rhetoric in the public concerning the $1.9 million that is now part of the mayor's veto. This was unappropriated dollars that were in the budget. that were in the budget during the last Monday night, during a brief time before we came to Committee of a Whole. There were some changes that were made to the budget. Based on those changes, this is why there was an error. It was not picked up by the internal auditor or by the finance department. And I take full responsibility for that, because the document that was presented to you was presented, I presented that document. So I know that some have indicated that they thought that the mayor had hid dollars. That's not what happened. And I just want the public aware of that before they make their public comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, just briefly, I want to thank you for voting to override the mayor's veto. I think that it's, it's just ludicrous that at this point in time, there could even be a discussion about not funding quality-of-life issues, actually, literally, life issues of warming and cooling centers. It's just an essential thing that we have to provide to our citizens as part of a city service. And secondly, I would like to just reaffirm that I expect and hope and trust that the money will be restored with the carryover funds to the Parks and Rec operational budget, so it doesn't take a 33% hit compared to anyone else's 10% hit in particular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Jody Washington.
So I'm gonna have to take my mask off right here, so you can know exactly how I feel right now. So while I do appreciate the city council and Committee of the Hall for voting in favor of putting forth the override of vetoing, of the veto the mayor did with the budget. And I'll just state what I said earlier, in case people haven't watched the, haven't been at the Committee of the Hall meeting. It's probably going to be on the YouTube channel, as always is. But I'm going to make this very clear where I stand on the issue. While I don't think the budget is perfect, I mean, cutting funds from the Parks and Recreation, I get some, sometimes austerity measures have to be made, but that's definitely something I am against. But even though I'm not a fan of that, I am in favor of at least some modest cuts to the mayor's, the budget for the mayor's department, because, or mayor's office, because it is way overfunded and way overspent. And if we're gonna have to, if any department needs austerity measures to cut their budget, it's the mayor's department. And as, and for him to just, because of that, for him to just turn his back on someone who may deal with him, is like, look, you've got to cut your, some of your budget. It's overspent. And for him to veto it, it just reads, for my, in the military, if you go turn your back on serving your country, that's considered, that's considered treason in the army. And I do consider that some form of treason for just, and also turning back on your own word, that can also be considered lying. And lying just hurts just about everyone, especially the people you've been elected to serve. And I say this as someone who was once somewhat close with Andy Shore. I mean, I mean, I'm not entirely in favor of getting rid of the strong mayor system, but considering his incompetence, even as someone who was once a friend of his, I mean, it does actually do a good job of advocating for a city manager-type system. And so yes, that's why I wholeheartedly support the city council override the mayor's veto, because we cannot have anyone obstruct the budget for the people that the taxpayers paid for, including me. So that's what, and the hardworking people of the City of Lansing. That's all I need to say, and I yield the last five seconds of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jody Washington, followed by Leslie Arnell.
Jody Washington, East Side. I want to say thank you. Thank you, Brian. I was watching you at home. Thank you for your words. I know it's not easy up there during budget time. It is really difficult, because you want to come across as a united front, but you are elected to represent the people, you know, and, and it's difficult. And when you come to the point where you have to override, it's extremely difficult, because the manipulation in the media and the stories that are told, you know, usually, they try to make the council look bad. And you all stood strong. You voted your conscience in Committee of the Hall. I couldn't be more proud. Patricia, I know you really went to the line, and thank you. Thank you. That takes courage. And Carol, I, I do get why you needed a recruit, a recusal. I don't think it was a political ploy. But Brian, it's been used. We know it has. People will not show up on the night of a difficult vote. The games are played, so I, I understand. The most heartbreaking issue for me is the warming centers. To me, that should have been first and foremost. I work daily with the people that are on the streets, and it breaks my heart, particularly during the sub-zero weather. You have no idea what it's like to go to a tent and hope the person hasn't frozen to death. We lose people to below-zero temperatures every single year in this city. And then when the flood was so kind to be able to let there be a drop in center, because the city couldn't pull it together, and I had been asking for two years to, Mayor Shore, please get a plan. We were finding them frozen in dumpsters. We, this is hard. These are people I care about. And to not have that be first and foremost for our absolute most vulnerable citizens is unconscionable, in my opinion. Patricia, you are right. The community centers are the way to do it. We don't need a building. We don't need 20, you know, 12 months a year. But we need it through the coldest and, and the hottest dates. So for that alone, I would have vetoed this budget. We need to take care of all of us, everybody that needs help. And I applaud you for your bravery, because you will take a hat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Leslie Arnell, followed by Ted Odell.
Hi there, how are you? Leslie Arnell, 1410 Sheldon. I first met the current mayor when he came to my door in October of 2016, asking for my vote, and what my concerns were for Bancroft Park neighborhood. I went into full detail about Verge's LEPA, leaving our entire neighborhood to rot after destroying part of the Mason esker for an unnecessary driveway into Grossback when we already had two entryways in there. That was the last time he's ever acknowledged me despite my numerous attempts. So I, for one, am very happy to see that you have chosen to go that way. Andy's fatally flawed budget erred on the side of bettering himself and not our city, and we are completely over being ignored by his good old boys admin taking everything personally while mucking up a perfectly good town with their bruised egos getting in our every way. Scott Sanford's dereliction of duty is a perfect example of his admin's model. Get big mad when asked to literally do the job for which you were hired for, then take it personally when it catches up with you with no accountability from the top. Shore has proven he not, he cannot be trusted with the funding we've already allocated. For him, in the winter, when our unhoused are freezing to death and glare ice covers the side roads, he has nowhere to be found. We pay for a staff whose only job is to literally untag the mayor in every flippant comment constituents attempt to loop him in, on social media during emergencies. When you can't get a hold of him, what are you supposed to do? And I'm really not sure what Scott Bean or Mark Lawrence are being paid for. And I'm really unclear as to why we have a deputy mayor who lives outside of Lansing. Yeah, no. We did not vote for unelected officials to run our city. The charter states the council president is the vice/deputy mayor. If the mayor cannot perform the duties of his elected office without these costly training wheels on the backs of Lansing citizens, then he needs to step down, as we certainly don't have it in our budget. This model does not work, is not welcome here, and it stops now. Please, you, the council, have heard our voices, and we ask that you officially vote in favor of overriding his infantile, spite-filled veto. I yield the rest of my time, because I'm too nervous to talk off the cuff. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ted Odell, followed by Mike Lynn.
Good evening. I'm here to speak to Agenda Item 13. Is this the appropriate time? Okay. My name's Ted Odell. I live at 1310 West Chiwasi Street. And I'm here to simply ask the council this evening to move ahead with the recommendation of the demolition board to raise the structure at 1309 West Chiwasi Street. This property did burn on St. Patrick's Day six years ago, and little to no work has been done or completed since that time. In addition, the structure has been completely gutted on the interior. There have been habitual red tags and other property violations since that time. And on behalf of the neighbors and myself, I would ask you to please consider the detrimental effect this longstanding issue having on the surrounding property values, and to move ahead with demolition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mike Lynn, followed by Erica Lynn.
First of all, I want to say, the People's Council of Lansing got two wins today. Give yourselves a round of applause, if you could. Sure, we can't, but anyways. We did that, plain and simple. I'm not gonna play around. People can act like this thing just came out of nowhere. We beat defeat in cold weather, sent emails, I mean, meeting after meeting after meeting, lobbying, getting in people's phone book, and phone, phone messages, text messages. I mean, it's been busy. In America, with two people, I mean, what we've done to try to get this council to come to where they were today, I'm taking that credit right now. That's a win. I appreciate you all for listening, going through what you've gone through. I watched the gym, the mental gymnastics that was going up here in order not to, not to override that vote. It's disgusting. I understand. I mean, with the lack of the emperor being here, it says that there was some disgust there. I mean, him not even being here at this council, he hasn't missed a council any other time before, especially under these type of circumstances. But, yo, people are waking up. I hope the media is waking up. Y'all don't report on none of this stuff. You guys show up to these meetings and hear all of this stuff, and then you'll go back and say the mayor's veto was overruled by the crazy council. It's not true. It's not what happened. People are tired, sick and tired. They packed this council room to tell you all that. I appreciate all you guys at council. I mean, it just took everything inside of me not to scream out when we were looking at recusing people and not even having a vote. I mean, and, and I think that Jeffrey Brown said it, why even be up there? If we can't do this, that's the emperor, we talk about emperor with no clothes, and that he is, but I was, that was about to be kingship. Like, I'm just gonna do what I want. I'll play political games. He already knew Spatterford was gonna vote his way. And then we have two recusers. And Carol, and I'm not trying to get out of, out of line here, but to say that you recused from voting on the very budget that you built, I think that you guys have to start looking at this whole concept of conflict. A potential conflict is not a conflict. If there's a thought of a conflict, you saying that there might be a conflict, that's enough sometimes. So at the end of the day, this whole conversation of where we almost just got to an hour ago was terrifying, that this budget would have went through, bloated the way that it was. Nothing would have changed. We wouldn't have gotten a warming center. We wouldn't have gotten anything that we asked for, while all of this extra stuff, 31, every, every other thing that is not in line to help anybody in the world was gonna get fully funded, was just disgusting. So proud that you guys stood up there. I mean, I've talked to a lot of you all throughout this week, and I know what it took to get here. I just can't, I mean, you all know the work that I do. I mean, this is like a full-time damn job, watching over top of all this. But I'm watching the work that you guys have done. And this moment, this wouldn't have happened a year, a year ago. Plain and simple, this just would not have happened. To go against the status quo, and, and Adam, I appreciate you spitting it, exactly fact. That'll never get outside of this room. So it's gonna take everybody here to go share what our council members have stated about this emperor with no clothes, because it'll never get outside of here by the, by way of the media. But we are at a point, and I'm seeing it with you all, and I appreciate you so much. You have no idea. I'm advocating for these people day in and day out, and I know you are doing the same. But now your votes and your voices are saying it on the dais. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica Lynn, and then Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Hello again. Erica Lynn, lifelong Lansing resident. I first of all want to say I, I am a little bit disappointed at how nervous I was, and how nervous I am even up to this point, because the vote hasn't actually happened yet. And I shouldn't be as nervous as I am, just simply because, as we've kind of stated before, you've heard from the people, you've heard from everything that you need to, you know, heard, everything that you need, in our opinions. But there's still that level of nervousness because of the political games and, and, and the mind, you know, a, all of these mind games and all this that has to always get inserted into what really should be being the voice of the people. But with that being said, I do want to acknowledge, I understand that overriding a budget veto is not an easy decision. I, I can imagine it's probably something that is difficult, and everybody probably dreads having to do. But today's vote, I do want to really acknowledge that it does demonstrate each one of you. So your votes earlier to bring it here, and your votes tonight, it demonstrates each one of you, your priorities, and your commitment to listening to the people, that you represent. But most importantly, it represents taking your responsibility for the long-term health of our city's finances seriously. That's what it truly represents. I know that we have the real vote coming up, and I am, I can't say hoping. I cannot wait for you to show all of us that you value the input that we have given you, the concerns of the people who have elected you to make decisions on behalf of our best interest and the best interest of our city. And I also want to uplift something that I heard earlier. Councilmember Hussein's not here right now, but he talked about shared sacrifice. The concept of shared sacrifice is extremely important. That represents a commitment to fairness, but also being a collective. And it also represents a body that truly cares about the well-being of our entire city. To Jody's point, our entire city, everyone, especially the most marginalized, especially the people that, that have to be taken care of the most. Remember, I said at one point, those are the most important people in our city? It acknowledges that everyone has to contribute in times of famine. We are in times of famine right now. I also wanted to say that leadership is not about making decisions from positions of power. That's what it's felt like for a very long time for all of the rest of us. But it's sharing the burdens, it's sharing the challenges, and it's sharing the sacrifices alongside not only those that they lead, and all of you up on the dais, but sharing in the sacrifices along with us, the citizens. Many in our community have sacrificed enough, and we are tired. This has been long overdue, that we don't feel alone in the struggles that our entire city is facing. So I do want to say thank you for taking a huge step in the right direction of stepping out and being brave, because I understand how difficult it is to go against the status quo, but it is so appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Farhan Sheikh Omar, followed by Darren Tews.
Good evening, Farhan Sheikh Omar. Tonight, we witnessed democracy in action. Tonight, we witnessed the reason why we go out and vote for you guys. So if you came here tonight
Sir, please direct your comments.
If you came here tonight to support our city council members, in order for them to override this veto, please stand up. I want you guys to look around. These are Lansing residents. These are the people that live here. These are the people that work here. These are the people that have invested in this community. These are the city taxpayers. These are the people that fund your salaries. Where is the mayor of this city? Where is the CEO of this city? We showed up. Where is he? Why does he always hide from his own residents, from his own constituents? I remember when he tried to backdoor the city retirees, and he tried to strip them of their health care and benefits in the middle of a global pandemic. And they showed up to city council, they showed up to city hall, they showed up to his house, and he was a no-show. We show up tonight, he's a no-show. He's in this building. But that's what happens when the people show up. That's what happens when we speak up. That's what happens when we email our city council members. That's what happens when we support them. We see change in this city, which has been long overdue. This is not a one-man show. The same city charter that gives Andy the right or the power to veto anything, gives you guys the power to override his vetoes. you guys the power to override his vetoes. Start using your powers. The days of his way or the highway, those days are done. They're gone. You have our support. You have our support. You ain't got to worry about Andy. You're not part of his cabinet. He can't fire you. You got elected just like he did. The reason why he's not able to show up and sit there and look me in the eye and look everybody else in the eye is because he has substitutions lined up. He's playing a game, but we're not playing any games with him. Lives are at stake. We had a little kid that died in this city, a toddler that died in this city because the property that he was living in was not registered with the city, meaning it didn't pass inspection, meaning it didn't have any working smoke detectors. We have over 700 red-tagged properties in this city, and yet, he's absent. Don't worry. We'll remember this, and we'll remember those who stood next to us and supported us and did what they needed to do. Andy, your time is up. Lansing's time is now.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren Tews, followed by, just, all I have is a first name, Emily.
Good evening, Darren Tews. I was coming to the city hall to take notes on the next month's actions for some property that I own. I'm going off of number 20, the six vacant lots. I didn't realize I could actually speak, but now that I'm here, I kind of did some quick notes. We've been providing services for Lansing, the city of Lansing, for the past 21 years. I am Lansing, life in Lansing, J-Dub graduate, '92. I currently own Pro Soil Site Services. We provide many functions for the city, for the common ground festival, we provide all the fencing. We do, for the past four and a half years, we've been doing the property board-up services for code compliance. We also do the emergency fencing for when Lansing Fire Department calls at any time of the day. And I purchased this property probably three years ago from the tax foreclosure that nobody wanted. We started having trouble back there. It's six lots, it totals about one and a half acres that butts up right behind my business at 3323 Northeast Street and Trips Automotive. So, we had drugs back there, sex people, people having sex. We fenced this all up and tried working with the city to actually take those lots and turn those into commercial use, so we can use that for storage for all of our fencing, fence panels, and so on. We just, I just wanted to introduce myself. I know this is going on the board for next month, so I took the chance, and here I am. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily, followed by someone else who just gave a first name of Kelsey.
Hello, my name is Emily. First and foremost, sir, congratulations on 19 years. That is outstanding. That's phenomenal. My name is Emily, and I am here for 1309 West Chiwasi. Sir, we are in, well, council members, we are in the middle of closing, and Mr. Allen couldn't make it today, but him and his builders have been here with me for every other meeting. They, because we haven't closed yet, and because my home at 1309 West Chiwasi is continuously being referred to as the ugly house, they have gone ahead and purchased, pulled the permits for siding and roofing, and they are prepared to begin working and restoring the home, even though we have not yet closed. They are working towards making that address, which is more than just an address to me, a perfect and affordable home for a new family. They're going ahead and assuming the responsibility and doing what they need to do to keep the neighborhood beautiful, to keep housing affordable, and I just want to thank the council members for allowing us the time that they are going to need, even though I myself ran into a lot of problems and could not restore the home. You guys have heard my story, I've been here multiple times. However, a new company has stepped in and has acquired the home, and they have pulled the necessary permits, and they're going to go ahead and begin to work to re-beautify the home, so that it's not even a eyesore for the neighbors and make everything better for all those that are concerned. They have decided to start the work on the outside, and they did give me the permit numbers and every, I don't know if you guys have checked, to see if the permits have been pulled, but they have been pulled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Kelsey.
Let's talk about that. My name is Kelsey Hudson. I live at 14660 Francis. I just want to applaud the bravery for you that are going to vote on this. There's a coward that's not here right now. I try to imagine a Lansing where Anthony Hulon didn't die, who could have been here to vote or to pay your salary. I imagine a future where we have affordable housing, or our gun violence is down, or we're not worrying about where our next paycheck is going to come. And I think that Lansing could exist. I like, I know that you all got elected because you wanted to make our city better, right? So, yeah, I applaud your bravery, and I hope that we have a Lansing where that person is not there, because I think if you really think beyond that, like, our city actually could be really amazing. Like, if we didn't have this distracting person, we live in the capital city, people, businesses come here from all over the place to our capital, and I think that we could be really amazing, but we're not right now. So, thank you for being brave and voting on this. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our final speaker, so we are to the consent agenda. We have already done Items 3 and 4, so 5, 6, and 7 are-
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So, what's remaining on the consent agenda is special land use 1-2023. It's a special land use permit at 109 East Randolph Street for the state-licensed adult foster care, small group home with a maximum capacity of 12 residents. We also have the Tri-County Office on Aging's Fiscal Year 2024 Annual Implementation Plan. And last but not least, fireworks display license, Pyrotechnico Fireworks Incorporated for the City of Lansing's Independence Day Celebration.
All right. For the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
We are to resolutions for action, item 8, the veto override.
Vice President Garza.
So, what we have before us is the mayor's veto override, items contained in the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget.
And we have a motion on that. Before we take any comments on that, I would like to be recused for a conflict of interest. As I stated in the Committee of a Whole, I have a current contract with HRCS. I have the proposal of a new contract with HRCS, and these are dollars that are used for retired and senior volunteer programs of Ingham, Eaton, and Clinton County. I also have to sign an agreement each year with the Office of Integrity with the federal government. These grants that we receive are used as match dollars, and the documentation has to say that I have in no way helped to appropriate these dollars, and they're the ones that determineate, not the city, whether they feel that that has been an appropriation. So, with that, I turn the gavel over to the Vice President.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Mr. Vice President, I failed to acknowledge some written communications that are on this item, if I might. We received written communications from Nancy Malo, Dot Johnson, Tamara Aaron, and Cheryl Irie, all in support of the veto override action, and I should have acknowledged those three in public.
Okay. Thank you, Claxton. Okay, so with all that, all those in favor of recusing, Councilwoman Wood, please state by saying aye.
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 All is opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes.
Okay. So, next, we have the vote on the fiscal year 2023 override. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor of the override veto, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The override passes. Please. Thank you.
Okay. We are to item 9, the annual training requirement.
Vice President Garza.
All right. Thank you, Council President. So, I'd like to move the resolution for the annual training requirement for all city boards and commissions' training on ethics ordinance, conflict of interest, and the Open Meeting Act.
This is something annually that we have asked the city attorney's office to make sure all boards and commissions are trained for the ethics ordinance, conflict of interest, and open meetings act. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Madam President, I would move the grant application for the Michigan Department of Treasury grant for underfunded pensions. In 2022, the state legislature passed a grant program in the Department of Treasury to help municipal pension systems pay down their pension debts for certain pension systems that were under 60% funded. The police and fire pension system does not meet that. It's actually more funded than that, but the ERS, the Employee Retirement System, is actually under 60% at a date specific in the past. So, we are putting in an application for a part of that $750 million to help with the underfundedness of the pension system through the Protecting Local Government Retirement and Benefits Act. We are hoping to get between $11 and $12 million, but that's dependent on how many municipalities received the information a week and a half ago and were able to turn around their applications before their June 15 deadline. Treasury was working on the application system, so we heard about it today in the Ways and Means Committee, and now before us is the resolution to submit our application, which is a requirement of the application from the state.
And that application has to be in June 15, and if we receive any of those monies, they go directly to the pension fund for reinvestment.
I think we'd have to accept it, but yes, definitely go right to ERS.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay. We're to, we have several orders to make safe or demolish, items 11 through 13.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So, the first makesafe or demolish order is for the property at 1020 Woodbine Avenue. Listed taxpayer in this case is Kyle Lupin. The state equalized value was listed at $8,500, and the estimated cost of repairs listed at $82,797. Because this is a fire-damaged property, this would be a 30-day makesafe or demolish. This has went through the demo board, this has went through our process in public safety. We have had a show cause hearing on this. To date, no permits have been pulled. And just for the audience, a few things. When we do have folks show up, we always make sure that we provide some measure of guidance to them when they're looking to essentially get us to halt the process. You have to be able to not only pull all permits, but you have to be able to demonstrate financial wherewithal, and you also have to put together a timeline of repairs that is amenable to building safety. So, with that being said, we never heard from this particular applicant. The Public Safety Committee did support this unanimously, so with that being said, I would move this for makesafe or demolish.
All right. We have a motion. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So, the next makesafe or demolish order is for the owners of the property located at 318 Clifford Street. Listed taxpayers in this case are Daniel D. and Kimberly Dudley. The state equalized value was listed at $37,500, and the estimated cost of repairs was listed at $80,905. Since this is not a fire-damaged property, this would be a 60-day makesafe or demolish. This was taken through, the demo board did go through, again, our Public Safety Committee process. We did not hear from the owners. It's our understanding that no permits, sorry, permits have been pulled, and so with that being said, I would move the resolution.
And a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
All right. So, the next makesafe or demolish orders are for the owners at the property of 1309 West Chiwasi Street. Listed taxpayer in this case is Emily Childress. The SEV information with regard to this particular property, $56,500, and the estimated cost of repairs was listed at $128,000. This went before the demo board back in February of this year. The makesafe or demolish order was issued on February 23, 2023, and then it was actually conveyed to the city council, so we could take it through the process, as they had not heard from the owner at that point. We have had quite a bit of engagement with regard to this particular owner. Our understanding is that there is a prospective buyer that has a potential grant that they've applied for, and if they are successful in acquiring that grant, they would like to take this property and turn it into low-income housing. However, Building Safety did have conversations with this particular owner, and our understanding is, at least last that we actually heard in terms of information from this prospective buyer, is that that is contingent upon the sale, is actually contingent upon the acquisition of that grant. That's the first piece. The second piece is we have made sure that we've let the listed taxpayer and the owner know that this process, it obviously has to go through our process, but it can be halted by, again, providing those three pieces that I discussed earlier. And so, the way that would look, if we were to actually approve this tonight, yet they could then prove that all permits were pulled, that they had financial wherewithal, and that they put a timeline together that was amenable to building safety, what would happen is we would actually look at reconsidering this, and then it would be tabled. And so, there is still an opportunity, essentially, for the individual that spoke earlier tonight to move forward, to get the necessary work done, to have this halted, or to bring the property up to code within 30 days, because this is a fire-damaged property. So, with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
Okay. And then we have three setting show cause hearings of the next items, 14 through 17.
All right. So, the first show cause hearing that we are looking to set is for the address at 3421 North Cedar Street. Listed taxpayer in this case, sorry, is Karen Allred. The SEV is listed at $37,500, and the estimated cost of repairs listed at $71,284. Because this is not a fire-damaged property, this would be a 60-day if we ultimately move forward and issue makesafe or demolish orders. The show cause hearing would be June 12, if approved by this body. So, with that said, I would move the resolution.
All right. We have a motion before us. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So, the next show cause hearing is for the property at 131 West Jackson Street. Listed taxpayer in this case is Stone Brothers Construction. State equalized value of this particular property is $26,300, and the estimated cost of repairs is $49,915. This did go through the demo board process. This is not a fire-damaged property, so again, this would be a 60-day if it goes through our process, and the show cause hearing would be set for June 12, if approved by this body. So, with that said, I move the resolution.
Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
All right. The last show cause hearing that we need to set is for the property at 1722 DeNora Street. I'm sure a number of folks that are familiar with this particular area and had the good fortune of working with Ms. Betty Drayor has heard about this property, probably many times over. This is, again, 13, I'm sorry, the listed taxpayer is 1309 Vermont LLC. This particular property was red-tagged, actually, all the way back in 2006, so it's been in disrepair for quite some time. The SEV is listed at $26,300, and the estimated cost of repairs is listed at $91,866. Again, not a fire-damaged property, so this would be a 60-day makesafe or demolish if it proceeds through our process. The demo board took a look at this back in February. They did issue a 60-day. They came back together in April of this year, and no work had been done, no permits had been pulled, so they did convey it over to the council. With that being said, should the resolution be approved by this body, the show cause hearing would be June 12. With that, I move the resolution.
And a motion. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Passes unanimously.
We're to item 17, the Pure Michigan Trail and Trail Town application.
Guess what, it isn't you, Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Spatafor.
Does Adam want to take this one? This is actually a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for designating Lansing as a Pure Michigan Trail and Trail Town. Supported by the Greater Lansing Visitor Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Friends of Lansing Regional Trails, as well as, we're hoping to support it from the city council. There's no costs associated with this, but it would help distinguish our nearly, our over seventeen miles of connected trails as Trail Town worthy, which is apparently something to shoot for, so we'll be submitting that application with council's blessing, so I move the resolution.
Okay. We have a motion before us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move the resolution setting a public hearing for Monday, June 12th at 7:00 PM for this noise special permit is with ET McKenzie Company. They'll be doing some combined sewer overflow work in Regulator Subarea 0348E, which I'm sure all of you recognize is an area bounded by South Washington, Evergreen, and Green Lawn. They are asking for a noise waiver from June 24th through November 11th of 2023, and April 13th, 2024, through June 29th of 2024, for Saturday activities between 8:00 and 4:30 PM. We were assured in committee that they don't plan to start work before 8:00, and they don't plan to use all those Saturdays, just in case there's weather overages or supply delays. They want to be able to get the work done in the time that we've allocated for them to do this. This is one of our state consent agreement CSO projects, so it is imperative that we do get it done, so I would move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Spatafor, my only question would be since they're looking at June 24th, you have the public hearing on the 12th, are you looking for action on the 12th as well? Because our next meeting would be the 26th.
Yeah, I don't think that they were going to start work on that day. This is really for overruns, but that's when the project is starting. So they wanted to be able to get that project lineup and, or project timeline in place, but I don't believe they were planning to start work on that Saturday. As they said in committee, it was for overages, and if they're over on day two, we've got a problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction and setting of public hearings, item 19. The Committee of the Whole introduced an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, re-adopting the codified ordinances of the City of Lansing. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
And that would be Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move to set the public hearing for the re-adopting of the codified ordinances for June 12th.
We have a motion in front of us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, the next introduction of ordinance, the following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, for amending the code of ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z4 2023, six vacant lots along the west side of the 3300 block of the unimproved North Large Street right away from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to S-C Suburban Commercial, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is applicant owner two's property LLC would like to rezone vacant lots from R-3 Suburban Detached Residential to S-C Suburban Commercial. This proposal was not approved by the planning board. They recommended, they voted three to one to recommend denial. The applicant purchased the six slots behind his business so that he can lawfully utilize them for outdoor storage related to his business, but part of that rezoning would be a vacation of the right of way on Large Street, which the planning department very much opposed. Let's see. The applicant has been cited by the city in the past for using lots for outdoor storage in violation of the zoning ordinance. During that time, the city received complaints from neighboring residential property owners about the unsightly appearance of the storage and disruptive level of activity that was occurring on the site. We heard a public comment from the owner requesting the rezone. Let's see. The purpose of the rezone is to permit use of the subject properties for storage. Again, according to staff, the findings of fact that staff do not support a positive recommendation for the requested zoning. The proposed rezoning is not consistent with the existing zoning and land use patterns in the area, and with the low density residential future land use pattern being advanced in the Design Lansing Comprehensive Plan. So with that, we will move it forward, and I will... Oh, I know, I just think I just had a moment. I will... What do we do with the resolution? Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. I move the resolution for, to hold a public hearing on Monday, June 12th, 2023. I'm really sorry about that, everybody. I don't know what just happened.
Not a problem. We have a motion for setting a public hearing on June 12th. Are there any questions or concerns? Councilmember Hussein.
I'm going to vote to set the public hearing, but I was able to watch the playback of the committee meeting, and there were a number of things that concerned me about this particular application. You know, it's true that it conflicts with the master plan, that calls for low residential density, or low density residential in this area. It's true that it would conflict with surrounding land use. I believe in three directions with regard to this particular property. We have residential, and then only to the east do we have commercial, and that obviously is pro-soil. One of the biggest things, when people, you know, and this point was actually made as part of the committee, when people bought property in that area, they had a reasonable expectation that if that vacant land was developed, that it would be developed into residential. So I really struggle with that. But I also struggle with the fact that we have, and this might be an aside, but that we have a contractor with the City of Lansing that has been actively violating our own zoning code. That needs to be, again, separately looked at, but that's a huge issue. The fact that not only did our planning board not support this, but also I think our zoning administrator and our zoning staff was adamant that this could be considered a spot zone, that this was inappropriate, I think is incredibly telling. So I will support setting the public hearing, but I'd be hard pressed to support this moving forward. Thanks.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Councilmember Brown.
I would just concur with what Councilmember Hussein said as well, sitting in the committee meeting and hearing those same sentiments, so, thank you.
Okay, okay, and again, this is just setting the public hearing, which is something that we're required to do when it comes forward, but then we'll have a vote on it afterwards. So with that, the setting the public hearing for June 12th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilmembers.
I have to read it.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
Introduction of ordinance, the following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, for amending the code of ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, for the revision of the district map adopted by Section 1242.02 of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z5 2023, 1906 East Miller Road, and the vacant parcel at the southwest corner of East Miller Road and Aurelius Road from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to RMX Residential Mix, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title, and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a, as the clerk said in his wisdom, is a recommended rezoning from R3 Suburban Detached Residential to R-MX Residential Mix. This is the request to rezone at 1906 East Miller Road and the adjoining vacant parcel. The purpose of the rezone is to permit multiple family residential use of the subject properties consisting of duplexes and single-family detached units. The planning zone, the planning board recommended approval, as did our planning department. The proposed rezoning will allow for the development and is consistent with the Design Lansing Master Plan's low-density residential future land use designation for the subject properties. And with that, I will move the resolution.
Okay, we have a resolution setting a public hearing for June 12th. All those in, are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We're going to have to go back to one, which is the codifying ordinance. So do you need to read it again, or?
No, it's just the resolution, so it just reconsider the vote by which the resolution was adopted.
Okay.
And then amend it.
Vice President Garza.
Okay, I would like to reconsider the vote. Says it was incorrectly stated as June 23rd, so it should be stated as June 12th.
On the paperwork, he did say the 12th and to the record, but...
On the paperwork, it's stated the 23rd.
So we have a motion to reconsider. All those in favor of reconsidering say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Then Vice President Garza. To amend it, to read.
Okay. Sorry. Make amendment to read for the re-adopting the codified ordinance to read as the, set the public hearing for June 12th.
All right, we have a motion in front of us. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, and we do have one more introduction of ordinance.
And this is for passage, isn't it?
Nope, we didn't do Z6 yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have the following ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, for amending the code of ordinances by providing for the rezoning of property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the zoning ordinance for property located at Z6 2023, 1326 North Chestnut Street, and vacant lot to its south from R6A Urban Detached Residential to RMX Residential Mix, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning, read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee on Development and Planning.
And that would be Councilmember Spitzley.
I'm catching up to you, Councilmember Hussein. What we have before us is a, as the clerk said, is a request to rezone property at 1326 North Chestnut Street, and the vacant lot to its south. The purpose to permit one four-unit row house on the properties. The properties will be combined into one parcel if the rezoning is approved. The planning board had the public hearing on May 2nd, 2023. Where the applicant spoke in favor of the rezone, and five area residents spoke in opposition to the request citing concerns about increased traffic in the area, limited availability of on-street parking, and increased level of activity in general being disrupted to the neighborhood. The planning department has recommended, excuse me, the planning department has recommended approval of the zoning request. Their fine effects is they support a positive recommendation for the requested zoning. The proposed rezoning will have no negative impacts on traffic, public services, the environment, or future patterns of development in the area. In addition, the new residential units will provide much needed housing with convenient access to public transportation. And with that, I will move the resolution establishing the public meeting for June 12th.
We have a motion, Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. With this particular situation, there was a split. They indicated a split vote, it did, you know, recommend positive, but it was a split. Talking with the zoning administrator, Susan, she was not in support, indicating that it was, if I can see it, it was really within one inch of, I guess, being legal to do it, but she said it would be more appropriate if it was three units versus a four. It was really a squeeze. So I said that, you know, I'm going to go personally and look, because she was saying the neighborhood in the way it is, but it wasn't just a full positive, it was a split, and she personally said she wouldn't recommend it. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, one of the things she added was the fact that this is an older neighborhood, and that's an incredibly narrow street, and so there is no TCO in that area to allow for on-street parking. And so I think she was concerned that, yes, you're going to have the eight spots that you're required to have per the zoning code, but that naturally, car-centric, you're going to have probably some issues with front yard parking, things like that. And that, of course, doesn't consider the fact that, you know, where do the kids play? And where, you know, so, so I did watch that, that was interesting.
Okay. All right, this is setting the public hearing, and all those in favor of setting the public hea... No, I thought we were on Chestnut.
I move forward.
We're okay.
It's you this time.
Not me, okay.
It's Ryan, it's her next time.
Okay. All right. With that, we are setting the public hearing for the property on Chestnut. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now.
Okay, now, we have Passage of Ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the Code of Ordances. Z1 2023, 411 Aurelius Road, rezoning from MX1 Neighborhood Mix Use Center to R2 Suburban Detached Residential District, is read a second time by its title, as it was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning, and is on the order of immediate passage.
And now, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So we've, this has been through public hearing, back to development and planning, and here for final passage. This is a private home, and the existing, the existing zone is MX-1, but when we did the Form-based code and the new zoning, it's inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood. And so what would happen with this, with this particular home is a couple things. One, if there was a fire and over fifty percent of the house was burned, they would not be able to rebuild. Or if they wanted to, you know, expand the home, or any major type of renovations, they wouldn't be able to do it. Or it would severely limit their ability to sell the home, because it's not zoned properly, and so whoever purchased the home would be limited in what they would do and be able to expand the house. And so this is really to correct and properly zone this location so that, you know, they can, you know, have all the rights of their house and doing whatever they need to do. And so this is, this is a zoning from existing zone MX1-1 Neighborhood Mix Use Center District to propose zoning R-2 Suburban Residential, and I will move the resolution for final passage.
Okay, and this would also be difficult to get a mortgage.
Yes, it would be, yes, ma'am, thank you.
So with that, it's roll call.
Okay, on adoption of the Z1 2023, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cos.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Aye, ye, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted, and that takes us to the next one that is going to be really fun to read. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, providing for the rezoning of a parcel of real property located in the City of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1242.02 of the Code of Ordances. Z3 2023, 818, 820, 908, and 914, May Street, 817, 821, 823, 827, and 903, East Saginaw Street, 7...
You forgot 843.
840, 827, 843, and 903, East Saginaw Street, 711, 714, 711, 713, 714, zero vacant lot, 717, 718, zero, 721, 722, 723, 724, 725, 727, East Park Terrace, 709, 713, 714, 718, 717, 721, 722, 725, 729, Quaker Court, and 711, 715, 721, and 727, and 737, North Pennsylvania Avenue, rezoning from RMX Residential Mix to D2 Urban Flex District, is read a second time by its title, it was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning, and is on the order of immediate passage. And we seem to have lost our live stream, City TV.
That gives you time to reread it.
Hopefully, we didn't lose the audio. City TV, okay, thank you. All right, with that, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So what we have... So, what we have, and this has been through public hearing, it's been back to development and planning. I think, you know, we need to acknowledge that during the public hearing, there were folks who were against this rezoning. We also received correspondence against the rezone. This is a rezone from R-MX Residential Mix to DT-2 Urban Flex. The existing land uses multiple vacant and single-family residential parcels. But this developer is proposing to put a line of townhomes along Saginaw, the Saginaw Street border, and then kind of gradually go down with other housing and apartments as you get further into the neighborhood. He is in the process or has purchased most of the properties in this area. This will be a gradual development. The townhouses along the Saginaw Street border, which would be Pruden Street? Would, I think that's where he's planning on starting, and then moving out. What else? The planning department voted in favor of this, stating that the proposed rezoning will have no negative impacts on traffic, public service, the environment, or future patterns of development in the area. New residential units will provide convenient housing for people who work, attend school, or simply choose to live in the area that's within walking distance of goods and services and entertainment venues already available. So, with that, I will move the resolution for the final passage of this ordinance for rezone.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Certainly, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadefor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Aye, a zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. And with that, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you wish to address city council, you need to fill out a yellow form. And if you haven't had an opportunity yet, we need you to jump up right away and get with grace in the next 30 seconds or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'll move that all items be considered, be read in full, and that the referrals be made by the President.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, pose, passes unanimously.
We have items from the clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
And notice of veto from the mayor.
Committee of a hole and placed on file.
Items from the mayor, budget amendment for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 year end.
Committee of a hole and the internal auditor. Just, just for councils and the publics, we don't have, we only have a memo on this. So, we're still waiting for the actual document.
Grant acceptance, AARP Community Challenge Flagship Grant for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Obsolete Rehabilitation Act, District Homes on Holmes LLC for property at 230 South Holmes Street, along with the setting the hearing for that item.
Development and Planning Committee.
And an obsolete Rehabilitation Act certificate for the same property as well as the setting the hearing on the certificate.
Development and Planning.
The appointment of Jesus Jesse Flores to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
Development and Planning.
And the appointment of Julie Durham to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
Development and Planning.
And the appointment of Raven Gilmore to the Park Board.
City Operations.
Communications and Petitions, a notice from the Liquor Control Commission, SS Gorman's Inc. Request Transfer Ownership of an SDD and SDM License with Sunday Sales Permits, Spirits and Sunday Sales.
City Operations.
We are to remarks by council members.
Remarks by council members, Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I just wanted to quickly say, I am incredibly moved by how many people came tonight and voiced their opinion. This is how democracy works. And, you know, with this veto override, we have a real chance now to talk about this money and do this process properly and work together. We can, we can look at this as a us versus them, but I look at this as an opportunity to start fresh and we can move this city forward. So, I appreciate each and every one of you coming out and voicing your opinions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council members? Seeing none.
Remarks by the mayor or executive assistant.
We have none, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we are, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We'll start with Daniel Arnold and followed by Nicole Timrak. You have up to three minutes to address the council.
Sure. Hi, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiley. I just have a thousand things to say today, but I, I just wanna talk about how much I love my City of Lansing. I am on disability income, and I have a housing voucher for eight years. I wake up every day and because of the hard work of all you people that give to this city and contribute to the city to make it what it is, I'm able to wake up every morning and lay out my dreams to do whatever I want to do every day. I get to wake up and just be around all you people out here who really care about the city. And I visit 10 government properties a day to speak to local, state, federal security police. That's my passion. Back, back, way back in the day, I got in trouble for the MSU riots of 99. And, you know, there was grace, I was shown mercy, and now, now, now I'm here just dressing my best. Right here, I have this necklace, this badge necklace. It says, "Police Protect and Serve," with a cross in the middle. It says, "Christ who strengthens me." And I really support people who wanna lay down their life for the protection of other people. And so, I hold this to my heart, and I say, it's just so hard to imagine somebody ready to die to give up their life for somebody else. And that's their career, that's the path they've chosen, is to be sacrificial. You can never pay them enough, so definitely don't defund the police. But, you know, this, I hold this to my heart and I wear this every day to just, just say, hey, you know, by the power of Christ, you know, I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. Therefore, I can, someone can lay down their life for us and to protect us. So, I'm around here, you know, 10 government properties a day, five days a week. And there's just so many resources out there for the poor. City Rescue Mission is giving a fine dinner that the government doesn't fund. They do that like every, every single night, they're feeding everybody really good food and just sharing what's on their heart to share, you know, with their faith. And so, you know, they need, they need people to serve, they need people to come up and, you know, donate food, donate money, come and serve food, come and work there. So, but there's just so many wonderful things going on. We have Rooter Park, you know, Cardboard Profits is out there, Punks was lunch, Homeless Angels. All these people are going out and just taking, I get to enjoy all these meals and be around all these people and wanna be their voice. So, and my church is there for me too, they're taking care of people at Crossroads Church. You know, one of my good friends, Norma here, comes out to that, and she just like enjoys it, she feels accepted and that there's love. And it's just, there's so many, so many great things going on all over this city, and thank you for that, God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is Nicole Timrak, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening, I'm Nicole Timrak. I'm resident of Lansing, 6928 Meese Drive. I wanted to address the council today over no mo may. I just recently learned that the city has been levying fines against residents who have been participating in this act of environmental stewardship. I have emailed the mayor my opinions on the matter. As a University of Illinois graduate in earth science and environmental sustainability, as well as a Michigan State graduate in forestry, been working in forestry for about five years now since graduating. And I believe that the City of Lansing should be allowing residents to participate without the threat of fines. It is literally the bare minimum that residents can do to be good environmental stewards. I don't need to be up here extolling the virtues of pollinator species. I think we all know how beneficial they are to our environment and our lives. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, my very first council meeting. And to build a dedicated pollinator garden to provide food for our pollination, or pollinator species in the most vulnerable months of the year, takes a lot of time, effort, money, knowledge, skill. I mean, if any of you garden, sometimes it can be hard to keep these things alive and know exactly when bloom times are occurring and all that. So, by providing that opportunity for residents to participate in no mo may without the threat of fines, they can literally do nothing, it takes no skill, no money, no time, and they benefit insects that we need for our environment. As well as, in addition to, helps to limit use of gas, unnecessary gas to mow these lawns, reduces emission that comes from these mowers. And it would just be, it'd be beneficial to be able to halt the levying of fines until June 1st every year to allow residents to be able to do this, participate in this action. And it also would help forward the City of Lansing's commitment to environmental stewardship, environmental sustainability as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Tammy Davis. Loretta passes, so we have Tammy Davis, followed by Stan Shuck.
Hello, my name is Tammy Davis. I've been a homeowner for 23 years. And the last three of my, three years of my life have been very difficult. You know, everyone has a story, everyone's story is worse than mine. I reached out to the mayor and I told him, and he said that he had my back. But instead, I now have to have an escort anytime, anytime I come into this building, which I do not think is fair, because when he came to my home and I voted for him, unfortunately, why did I do that? I said, "Mr. Andy, so why is it okay for me to adjust him then as Mr. Andy, but now he's not Mr. Andy and he doesn't have my back?" I met with the treasurer about eight weeks ago in regarding saving my house that I lost to a fire two years ago when the fire went up and out the window. And I was told by Mr. Fox that I had to secure $15,000 by the end of the month. I have secured that money with the contents of a private adjuster that I've hired for the contents of my home. And I've reached out several times to the treasurer, the mayor, Mr. McDonald, many, many people. And my time is running out, and no one is listening, and I'm not trying to lose my home. I've had seven children in that home. My daughter who passed bought me that home. I want, I now live in a Simtah building. You know, it makes no sense. I've been a property tax owner for 23 years. And I don't know why there's no help in this community. I've been everywhere, up and down, you know, there's no help. I'm a mother of three little boys who is a widow. And it just makes no sense that there's no help in our community, there's no help from our community leader. What is the purpose of them? And I waste the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Stan Shuck, followed by Michael Marofsky.
Good evening, Stan Shuck. Let's say a couple of things. I keep hearing everybody talk about Shelby, Shelby this, Shelby that. Where'd Shelby come from? Well, Shelby got suggested for her job by the financial health team, Brian Felleck, Dave Hollister. She got the job, filled her staff with high-priced employees, and one of the first things she did was turn around and give Brian Felleck the CSO oversight contract. And then abruptly left the city. Went to work for the guy at John Bean, he went into receivership, then he went to Flint, and now she's back here. I don't, I don't know how all that happened, but it all seems like a big conflict of interest. To move on, the chip ceiling, what a travesty. And now your new superintendents, deputy, whatever you wanna call these guys, they really got no business being in charge, they're not, they don't have the education or the qualifications. They were simply moved up when Jim Campfield and Crimbrank and Vic Rose left. They were just kind of moved up through attrition, not because they have the education or the skill set, that's obvious, they don't. The, they have recently made the decision that they're not gonna sweep the entire areas that were chip sealed. All they're gonna do is the gutter pans, and that's it. So, are we as residents supposed to blow all of those chips into the gutter pan so they'll get cleaned up? You know, how are we gonna get this cleaned up when the people in charge come down here and say one thing to the diocese and the people and then tell their employees to do something that is obviously not what they told everybody? You know, that, that, that doesn't wash, it doesn't pass the smell test. I hate to tell them how to do it, but the way it's done tried and true is you run a flusher truck down the middle of the street. You push all that stuff to the gutter pan, and then you sweep it up. And that's the way streets are traditionally swept. So, you don't have to make three or four trips up and down the street. The flusher truck fills up at the hydrant, flushes the middle of the street to the curbs, the sweepers clean it up. And that's the way it works, and that's the way it needs to be done. This is a travesty, and it needs to be addressed. They need to be held accountable. We talked about accountability tonight. They're at will for a reason. That reason is accountability. It is time to hold Andy Kilpatrick accountable for this travesty that has happened throughout the city of Lansing. Like I said, Meridian Township's fixed, pave everything they did, 'cause that is the only fix.
Thank you.
Next is Michael Marofsky, followed by Guillermo Lopez.
Little over a year ago, we had an incident in a house in the 1400 block of Woodbine, where, of course, a lot of, police were up there. The paramedics were up there having to give people Narcamed from drug overdoses. It finally culminated with shots being fired at the house. The police captain, Captain Deal, she got right on it. There was some meetings with the city attorney, code compliance. It went on for a while, but finally, the house went up for sale, and we've got a nice resident in there. Now, on the 26th of April, we have a house on 1128 Cooper Avenue. Large number of shots were fired in there at night. We were hoping we could get some answers from the police department. I walked down there after a few neighbors told me about it. Found two bullet holes in the door, six in the window, two upstairs. The glass was smashed. And I talked to two of the residents, they said they heard the shots. To them, it sounded like it wasn't semi-automatic, it may have been something else. And the two residents told me there were, I don't know how they got this information, that there were over 40 bullet casings that the police picked up. Someone was home, I guess no one was injured. I sent Catherine Deal an email about this, see if we could get some cooperation like we did before. All she told me was I would have to file a Freedom of Information Act on this. I don't know why we can't get the cooperation we had before on this. The people on Cooper, the 11200 block, they're taxpayers just like they are on Woodbine. And I, I had to notify code enforcement about it, and so they tagged the house for some violations. It almost seems like the captain has a hidden agenda on this. Can you refer this to the Public Safety Committee and see if we can get some answers? All we want is the same treatment that we had before. want is the same treatment that we had before on Woodbine. It's got a lot of people nervous about it. Be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Guillermo Lopez, followed by Erica Lynn.
Okay. Guillermo Lopez, nineteen-twenty-seven Pleasantview Avenue, Lansing, Michigan. So I'm here for a couple of things. Number one is to, uh, remember Dr. Carnegie. Um, recently passed, a longtime principal at Saxton High School, community person, pastor, very much respected in the community. I had the pleasure of working with him on the police commission the last, uh, couple of years. And, um, he's gonna be missed. He's gonna be, and I just wanted to bring up the fact that we've lost a, a very important person in our community. So our condolences to the family and friends. Secondly, you know, as an elected official, you know, I know that sometimes we make decisions, uh, and they need to be made, whatever it is, good, better, in between. The question is, how do we move forward? And I hope that both parties after this decision can get together and, and, and work for the betterment of all. Um, I don't know all the details, but then again, something's gonna happen. And I think that working together for the betterment is the thing to do. A gripe of mine, um, is that, uh, we're pot, pot hole city, USA, you know? I talked to Adam a long time ago. You know, and I look at, I look at it this way. I think we need to invest some time and effort to find funding, if not from our general fund, to find it somewhere. Because when you fix a street, you uplift the neighborhood. And eventually your property values go up. And if they go up, that means money for the city. So I think it's a long-term investment that will eventually pay off, and I think sooner than later. So I, I ask that you spend some time, you know, looking at, at different ways of funding our streets. Um, and finally, I just wanna again invite you to our, uh, to the city's first, um, festival of the season and, uh, ask you to, for more information, go to Cristo Rey Church, cristorreyfiesta.org. Cristo Rey Fiesta.org. You'll have more information there. And again, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Erica Lynn and then Mike Lynn.
Hello again. I feel very redundant. I think this is the third time tonight, but I'm gonna start off by saying thank you. Um, thank you because tonight's decision, um, I think it, it absolutely sets an extremely powerful example for leadership. Um, I think it says something to the people that couldn't have been said any other way. There was literally no other way to set the type of precedence that was set tonight. Um, and I think that your willingness to, to make those tough choices is gonna pave the way for a lot of what I hope to be, some different budgetary practices in the future, where the budget process isn't as stressful and stress-inducing and anxiety-ridden and creates a lot of frustration. Um, but I think that standing firm and overriding the veto, you have shown that our city's financial stability is important. And that's something that I've been trying to, um, impress upon you, that it's not just about today. This is not a new problem. This is not something that just cropped up this year. Um, the last two budgets deserved this level of scrutiny and this level of amendments and this level of discord. Probably the last four to five. But I will say it's also important to note, um, the primary purpose of a city government, and I guess I could say this is my opinion, is to serve the community. Um, it is to address the needs of its residents. So a part of the budget process and your role is to allocate resources based on community needs, right? That should not be a fight. And it also shouldn't be an afterthought. It should always be the goal that we work backwards from. Um, we talk a lot about equity, a lot. A lot of people, a lot of people in different city departments and city of, you know, elected officials, we talk about equity a lot. And I just wanna remind everyone that equity always starts at the underserved. It starts at the marginalized and the left behind. And all things that are rooted in equity should always take a front seat, um, to executive staff positions, to redundant positions, redundant roles, redundant duties and high salaries. Always. Um, it has to. And to be the city that we all love, and I know that you all love and that we all fight for every single day, we have to prioritize community needs over that. Um, I also wanted to say to, to Kelsey's point, that almost brought me to tears when she talked about some of the really horrible things that have happened as of recent. Um, but I also wanna say that Lansing does not have to be defined by the worst of it. Um, but it takes a lot of work in order to kind of come out of a rut like that. And there's gonna be a lot of tough decisions after this and a lot of sacrifice to, to make when it comes to that. But I do tonight feel very cautiously hopeful that there was a brick laid tonight for a new foundation for our city to not just look like a city that people from out of town wanna move to or visit, but a city that the current residents can be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Mike Lynn, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
All right. So first of all, what we not gonna do is act as if what just transpired and what's transpired over the last five years didn't happen. So it's okay to keep talking about unity. It's okay to keep talking about moving forward. But I've heard that at least fifteen times after this, this administration has completely, uh, derelict the duty, the, the community. Just completely done that or hit a murder in the jail. So let's talk about who we're talking about when we're talking about working together. That's the same individual who put that budget together, told Carol she, he wasn't gonna go back on it, and then came back here and behind your guys' back and you all just said it happened. You know, why is it so hard to recognize that we're dealing with a corrupt, a corrupt executive branch? Like if once we recognize that and say it and know it, then we know how to defend against it as a community. I applaud you all because I can remember a time when I was con- confrontational with you all, right? 'Cause you weren't speaking out. You guys were silent. I was talking to a brick wall about people's lives when we tried to get advance peace here. When I tried to do anything to get some money to stop the gun violence and our kids dying, I was talking to a brick wall up here, right? So I commend you guys for figuring out how to work with the community, but having, you guys keep talking about working with the, every chance this man gets, every chance this administration gets, they screw you. Every single time. Carol, you had, you know, I was so upset when you said I made, I, I, I stuck to my word. That's because you are a stand-up individual. You are a model citizen in this city. And you made a deal with the devil and it bit you. And here we are talking about working again and working again without acknowledging the harm that's being done, the person that's doing this stuff. And the fact that it's propensity to do it is just overwhelming, over top of helping people. So let's just acknowledge it. Let's be real with it. So we understand where we all stand. Period. Everybody in, so like, you know, I was a firefighter. I was one of those people that guy came up here and said that, you know, should be on top of the earth. I, I risked my life. I've walked into burning buildings. I pull babies out of buildings, right? But that person would tell you that our involvement civically is personal. We don't like him. And it's acceptable to say that too, and most people believe it. Because people aren't down here in this office, in this room right here, seeing the actuality of what's happening in our city. So when I'm out in the world, I'm crazy pants. And here it's like, damn, you know what? He's probably right. So I appreciate when this diocese is fooled because people get to actually see the truth, yo. Until you all admit that we're dealing with a corrupt executive branch, we're never gonna be able to work together. So you have to know a snake is a snake. You don't have to stop him from being that. You just have to know what you're coming in the room with, know how to handle it, know how to deal with it. But every time we get all, all mushy and wanna grab hands and unite with a, with somebody corrupt and willing to throw the most marginalized down the river and we ain't acknowledging that, now we're just complicit. So let's at least acknowledge the fact of what he just tried to do today, what he's done over the last five years before we start talking about unifying.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is Nicholas Zandi, followed by Tam Rose.
So, again, took my mask off just so you can know exactly how I feel about this. I'm just wanna congratulate the, uh, city council, uh, for actually stepping up and overriding the mayor's veto. And I'll just say this about, again, what I've said before about, uh, what the mayor did. What he did again was dereliction of duty, turning his back on someone who made a deal with him, saying, "You better not turn your back on me." And guess what? Turned his back on. And I'm just gonna say this right now. I know this is a little personal, but I'm just gonna say, "To heck with my past friendship with him." 'Cause I'll just declare, we're no longer friends. Just straight up, right here and now. I've, I can't believe I had any respect for the guy. 'Cause this is just straight up one of the most corrupt things I have ever seen. And I've known about corrupt governments. I've known how my family have lived, has lived through Nixon's resignation and the Watergate scandal. And I've had to live through many wars that should not have happened, like Iraq and Afghanistan. I've lived through many of Trump's corruption while he was president. And seeing this, this is just about on the same level. And this is another, one of the reasons why I think opening up the state charter is necessary, so that we can open up representation from all across the city by increasing the number of wards in order to ensure that more and more of the people can make sure that the mayor is accountable. Any mayor in particular, whether, regardless of who they are, but especially Mr. Shore. And I just, and while I'm not entirely in favor of a city manager system, I am however in favor of the, of an actual position of a deputy mayor, not just that useless staff position that calls itself the deputy mayor, like an actual rank, like second to the mayor, kind of like a lieutenant governor or a vice president who presides over the city council and breaks ties, which I'm sure there are ties that may happen, whether or not we have a bit of a, an interesting predicament on the city council. So, and also another, and also to make the city attorney, uh, who is right in front of us right now, an elected official rather than an appointed official, so they're accountable to the people and don't have to worry about, um, getting fired by the mayor, but rather re-elected by the people. That is all I really need to say right now. And again, I yield the last four seconds of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Tam Rose, followed by Norma Bauer.
Good evening, council. I'm Tam Rose, AKA Erin, Ward One. Um, I wanna thank all of you for overriding the mayor's veto. We needed this for many years, for every council member to stand up and listen to the people. This is a win for all of us. There are many out there that still need to be heard. Excuse me. I was one of them. Um, due to nobody helping me, I now suffer from congestive heart failure, from the mold, the asbestos and the carbon dioxide that I was left to live in all those years. Otherwise, I had to become one hundred percent homeless. So let's not let this happen to anybody else. When somebody comes to you, I ask you with all my heart, don't let them be another me. Listen, help them, support them and represent them. That's why we have you. And you've proven tonight that you can do it. We have a win. Now, I have something I need to say. When the last gentleman was speaking about the city attorney, I was very appalled that he thought that was funny and busted out laughing. These are the citizens that are speaking and they need to be heard and respected. Now, we can go back to Mayor Shore. He don't show up on crucial matters. You know, this is a consistent thing of him missing. That's somebody that's spineless. He sits there and says he takes it personal. No, he made it personal for the people that are victims. These people are suffering because of his choices. And we need to stop that. We need to show him, you guys are gonna stand up against him, the city attorney and code compliance. We have 311 right now. Um, Jane said last time she spoke. She spoke too. All kinds of citizens calling her. I called 311, trying to get through. They couldn't get through to her. They said they can't reach. They can take messages. So they take the messages. They say they don't know when they can be picked up or when they will. They try to call themselves. They get turned in to their own 311. We need changes so people can be heard. We're making sure everybody has a chance. But what's, while these changes are making sure everybody is oppressed, they're being silenced, and we need our city council more than ever before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Norma Bauer.
My name is Norma Bauer and I live in Lansing. And I wanna say thank you for serving and for doing what the people want. And I wanna make clear that I did not come tonight, per the question that was asked, I did not come here tonight to call out the mayor. I agree with all these people. I just did not come for that reason. I came to be a character reference for Mr. Daniel Noland. Um, Dan and I are friends. We have our differences. He attends multiple churches. I belong to none. He's a big fan of police. On behalf of the marginalized people I have long served, I have a problem with the behavior of police who practice brutality. Dan and I find common ground in our desire to build trust between the community and the law enforcement side. I served on the ALPAC, that's Allies and Leaders for Police and Community Respect, since its inception more than three years ago, until I was kicked out a couple of months ago. 'Cause guess what? The police don't want to hear the voices of the people. You've been patient in listening to them, but the police would rather not, so they kicked me off. Now, Dan is in good standing with ALPAC, uh, because he's a big fan of police. He's a member in good standing. And, um, let's see. I had to write this down. He's, uh... People have been traumatized by law enforcement officers who practice brutality and who killed people or injured them severely, um, just because they look like them, you know? I mean, you're traumatized, right? Now, mind you, the community members on the ALPAC do want to hear from the people. And that's why they keep sending me links so I can attend the ALPAC meetings. But I don't wanna go where I'm not wanted. I don't wanna go where I can't hurt. I'm not the only one. There's plenty of people who agree with me, so let them carry the ball. Um, Dan is welcome there. He loves people who he talks to every day, uh, both, uh, people who preserve, protect and defend. And I admire him for talking, taking a job. He admires police who take a job that gets him into dangerous situations. He's welcome on the ALPAC. He also talks to members of the community who've been marginalized. So I admire him for his courage in overcoming many massive challenges. Uh, so if the mayor sends out a press release to draw people's attention to some good thing that happened in Lansing, Dan wants to know about it. And he wants all the people he talks to to know about it. So why doesn't the mayor invite him to the press release events? Um, it would definitely serve the people. We all need to hear good news sometimes, don't we? So thank you for taking, uh, notes on that, uh, Mr. Representative of the, of the mayor. Um, Dan's a member of the ALPAC. The police trust him. Why doesn't the mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was our final speaker.
And with that, we are adjourned.
With that, we are adjourned.